The City of Boston's Zoning Board of Appeals Subcommittee Hearing for August 19th is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law, including the provisions of an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency that was signed by Governor Baker on June 16, 2021. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings that it adopted during the pandemic until April 1, 2020. The hearing of this subcommittee is being held remotely via the WebEx Event Platform. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. As with our in-person meetings, comments in support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting will be limited by the chair as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by the project, that is, those individuals who live closest to it. If you wish to comment, please click the Raise Your Hand icon in the application via the WebEx Event Platform. To raise your hand, click the Participant Information icon. From there, find your name. And on the lower right-hand side, you should see a hand raising icon. Click the icon and your hand will be raised virtually. Click it again and your hand should go down. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star three to raise your hand. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. As with all of subcommittee hearings, if your project is approved today, there is no reason for you to appear at the board meeting on Tuesday. However, if there is not consensus or if there's some other issue, your project might be deferred to a full board meeting and at that time we will give you the date. Go ahead, Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. Calling the first case, calling BOA 119-4620, 33 Bartlett Street. This is a renovation of an existing third-floor attic. The renovated space will consist of a master bedroom along with the bath and guest bedroom. The existing gable roof will be enlarged with an addition of shed and gable dormers. The violation is Article 62, Section 25, Roof Structure Restriction, and Article 62, Section 8, Side Yard Is Insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, this is Tim Sheen. I'm the architect for the project. I'm at 9 Wall Street in Charleston. We're going to defer today on this project. We've got to rework the design with the neighbors next door at 31 and 35. And my clients, you know, for once aren't in a huge rush, so we want to do a good job and try to make everybody as reasonably happy as we can, so we're fine with a long date, if the board is.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Make a motion for deferral.
I'll second.
I too am in support, please, Mr. Fortune.
We could do it November 9 at 5 o'clock.
November 9 is fine. Thank you much.
No, I'm sorry. Hold on a second. Subcommittee, so November 4. November 4.
November 4. Thank you very much.
That's for the subcommittee.
Subcommittee, right?
Yep.
November 4.
We'll be ready. Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 119-0278, 252 Bunker Hill Street. This is a demo of an existing roof, add new dormers, windows roofing exciting, and new dormer height will be lower in the existing ridge and shed roof height. The violation is Article 9, Section 1, Extension of a Non-Conditional Use is Conditional. Article 62, Section 25, Roof Structure Restricted District, and Article 62, Section 14, The Rear Yard Setback Is Insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Attorney William Ferro on behalf of the applicant.
Mr. Ferro, can you clarify, this is a one-two, is it a one or a two-family dwelling?
It is two-family dwelling.
Okay, so please go ahead and tell us what's being proposed.
Yes, we are showing you some slides. What's being proposed is that the existing roof line, which has a single domed window, be expanded to three windows on the facing side. It actually brings the roof ridge lower by doing this. You can see in this rendering, the existing condition is to your left, the proposed condition is to your right. This would allow for additional floor area on that floor of approximately 70 square feet, which would be 60 additional feet that currently exist.
Okay, Mr. Ferro, can I just ask you, what was the view that we just saw? Is that the rear view?
That's the street view.
That is the street view, okay. Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
The plans are good. No question on the proposed scope.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Caitlin Stapleton from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support of this proposal. There were no concerns or opposition from the abutters. Thank you.
Is anybody here, anybody else to speak either in support or in opposition?
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, given that fact, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA Design Review.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set with that proviso. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 119-3432, 41 Monument Ave. This is a 20 by 26 long new roof deck, actual a roof hatch. The violation is Article 62, Section 25, Roof Structure Restriction, Article 62, Section 8, The Building Height Is Excessive in Feet, and Article 9, Section 1, The Extension of An Unconforming Use. Name and address for the record, please.
Again, my name is Tim Sheen. I'm the architect for the project. I'm at 9 Wall Street in Charleston. And this is for a roof deck accessed by a hatch. It'd be a 20-foot, maybe the width of the house, 20 feet, it'd be 26 feet long. And the neighborhood process, you know, the neighborhood meeting was lightly attended, just the person next door. And that was mainly about an HVAC condenser, which is located on this, I know, too close to them on a lower roof. So as part of this job, we're going to relocate those condensers up onto the roof with the roof deck. And that's basically it. So it's just a roof deck accessed by a hatch.
And is this a one or a two-family?
It's a single family.
It's a single family?
Yeah.
Okay, and how many square feet is that? Oh, it's 20 by 20. Okay, how are the plans?
20 by 26, yeah.
The plans are good. No questions.
Anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Caitlin Stapleton from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have one letter of support.
Thank you. Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with... I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah.
I don't think it needs a design review.
With you now. I too am in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 117-3917, 36 Baldwin Street. This is create a new master bedroom, walk-in closet, bathroom in the attic space, and extend living space into the attic, construct new dormers. The violation is Article 62, Section 25, Roof Structure Restrictions. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi there, this is Kelly Parvani. And my address is 36 Baldwin Street in Charleston. This would be my house that we're trying to build, this extra bedroom bathroom.
Is this a single-family dwelling?
It is correct.
Okay, so please tell us how, tell us what you're proposing to do.
We are trying to add an additional bedroom, so master bedroom, as well as a walk-in closet and a second bathroom. We do now have attic space, so we're basically trying to convert that into living space as well as add the dormers on both the front and the back.
And how many square foot addition is this?
Oh geez, I'm so sorry because I don't know why there's nobody else on this call for me. My architect is not on here. I think it was going to be...
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
The plans are good. No questions on the proposed scope. I do think if we approve, we should definitely have BPDA Design Review, just because there's a row of these similar houses. So I think there is a little bit of a precedent being set here for the expansion into the roof, so.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Caitlin Stapleton with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And the Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA Design Review.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set. Good luck. Thank you so much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 117-9009, 70 Russell Street. This is to extend living space in the basement for Unit 1. There will be an exterior window replacement and enlargement. And the level 2 recce will be under 50% of the total building area. The violation is Article 62, Section 8, The Floor-to-Air Ratio Is Excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Again, this is Tim Sheen. I'm the architect at 9 Wall Street in Charleston. I promise this is my last one. This is an existing two-family brick, you know, three-story structure with an unoccupied basement now. And the plan is, we'd like to combine the, you know, the existing first-floor one-bedroom apartment into the basement and convert this into a two-bedroom, two-bath duplex. The ceiling height, it's a great structure, you know, we got almost eight feet. We got 710 down there finished. When this is done, we'll have both our egresses and all we really need to do, we've got good windows in the front, one just has to be slightly bigger to get, you know, to get the sill the right height from downstairs. So that's essentially the project. It'll be 792 square feet with both floors, so it's fairly small.
Ms. Edwards, can you, who is this? Oh, Steph? Stephanie, can you please show us the plans and if there's any rendering of what this will look like?
Yeah.
Okay, and so how will be, because you know, Mr. Sheen, we are really opposed to having bedrooms in the basement. So can you tell us why this story is different?
It's got great windows. I mean, most of these houses in Charleston have, like where I'm looking, where I'm looking right now in my window, they have like a two-by-three little basement window or not even that. This has pretty good windows, you know, and it's going to, it gets decent light that way in the morning and good ceiling height, you know, it's going to have just under eight feet, so it's better than most basement apartments.
And at the rear, what's the light situation back there?
Not as great because it's surrounded by buildings all the way around. It's, 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 there's just no light back there. You know, it's hard to face itself, but there's 40-foot buildings all around it.
Okay, Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
The plans are as depicted by the architect. I mean, I have a little bit of a problem with the basement bedroom unit on the front because if you zoom in on the lower plan, so if you can scroll up a little bit, they're not able to meet the actual egress capacity in terms of this doesn't appear, at least the sill height, without adding a step inside. So it's not... So, you know, I think, unfortunately, I think we're nervous about the lower-level bedroom units and then this one doesn't quite make it, so they're adding an additional step of seven inches to increase that and make it work. And just, I just, I think based on the history of the board, I think that's something we should think about.
Okay.
Okay, so Mr. Sheen, you're before us often enough, so please help us on these projects because I know applicants want certain things, but sometimes I know they might need your assistance with a reality check.
Yes.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Caitlin Stapleton from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, so let's, Mr. Robinson, are you, are you ready with a motion? Okay, may I have a, please?
Yeah, just one quick question. Are these homeownership or rental?
These are rental.
Rental.
Oops, just a note to Tom and the crew, we'd like to have these homeowner occupied.
Yeah. Not sure how the rental ones look there. It's generally supposed to be limited to owner-occupied units only.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like based on the board's position, you know, I would recommend, or I'd make a motion to deny this based on the history of, and where this specifically is with the additional step.
Okay, may I...
I would agree with that, Mr.
I too am in support of that, so sorry, Tim, it's been denied.
Okay, thank you for your time anyways.
Thank you.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 119-2874, 123 Pembroke Street. There's a companion case, building code BOA 119-4422, 123 Pembroke Street. This is to construct a rear deck at power level, construct the roof deck. The violation is Article 64.9.4, Townhouse Row House Extension. The proposed project that involves the addition of a balcony above the first story shall be conditional. This is for the violation of building code, the ninth edition 780 CMR 1011, Stairways 1011.12.2 Roof Access, where a stairway is provided to a roof. Access to the roof shall be provided to a penthouse to comply with Section 1510.2. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, John Moran, Elton Advisory Services, with the mailing address of 130 Beach Road, Orleans. Madam Chair, if I may proceed with the building code relief first, which is customary. We are seeking to install a hatch rather than the required headhouse and would suggest that the variance should be granted because the alternative hatch is a safe compliance alternative. The hatch is customarily the means of egress in the South End Historic District and would maintain the historic harmony of the streetscape and roof scape.
Okay, and is this a one or a two-family, please?
It is a, it is a one-family with the change of occupancy to a two-family.
And the two families are allowed as of right?
Yes.
Okay, and it's owner-occupied?
This is a development, Madam Chair, and will be sold as condominiums.
Okay, may I have a motion, please, Mr. Robinson?
Madam Chair, before you do that, I just have a question for Mr. Moran. We have a letter in here from Boston Water and Sewer, but we don't have a citation for groundwater. Could you maybe explain that?
Yes, the building is, although it's a two-unit building, a sprinkler system was installed and that generated the water and sewer letter. It is not a G card. A home harmless letter has been filed with the board and with the groundwater trust, Kristen.
Kristen, are you...
It does, it does say Article 32 Compliance Only Groundwater Storage and Recharge.
Kristen, are you on? No, he's not. Okay, let us go ahead with this, given what the citations are that have been advertised. Mr. Robinson?
I am comfortable with the building code relief request, so I would make a motion to approve the building code relief needed for that.
And I would second that.
I too am in support, so that's all set. So, Mr. Moran, please explain to us the rear deck.
The rear deck will be cantilevered at the power level and will project six feet into the rear yard. It is dimensionally conforming and a conditional use permit is required since it is above the first story.
Okay, and tell us about the roof deck?
The roof deck is for the exclusive use of the upper unit. The upper, again, this is a two-unit condominium. The upper unit size is 2,598 square feet, is a four-bedroom. And the lower unit, again, occupies three floors, is 2,449 square feet, and is a three-bedroom. The...
Okay, hold on, Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Plans are good. No questions on the scope associated with this relief.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Kim Crucioli from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support of this proposal. And a butters meeting was held by our office on June 9th where no concerns or opposition were shown by the abutters. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ana Calderon from Councilor Fling's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have no raised hands. I know a few callers are on. Just a reminder, if you're on, please press star three if you would like to raise your hand and give testimony. But I do not have any raised hands at the moment. Thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set with that. Good luck.
Thank you. Calling the next case, calling BOA 121-5852, 892 East Broadway. This is building a pool in the backyard. The violation is Article 68, Section 7, Accessory Pool Is Conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small, I have a business address of 51 Dobson Road, Rain Tree. With me today is Mr. Brian Donovan, who is the owner of the property. Madam Chair, we're here seeking relief in the form of a conditional use permit, which hopes to install a swimming pool in the rear of the property.
So, Mr. Small, for a moment, please, is this a one or a two-family? And is it, and is it owner-occupied?
It is a two-family dwelling and it is owner-occupied, yes.
Okay, so tell us about the pool.
The pool dimensions are 18 by 36 and they have a quarter-half foot on each side and five feet in the rear.
And is it fenced?
It will be, yes, it will be fenced.
Okay, and let me just see, okay. How are the plans? I know you have deep experience in this, Mr. Robinson.
This is, this is my first pool, so I'm kind of excited about it. No questions on the plans.
Okay.
And if there was a diving board, but I would, that's maybe too much.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposed pool?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Healy Dillon, Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ana Calderon from Councilor Fling's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have a few letters of support.
No raised hands, thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support and of course, we know that it'll meet all other safety requirements.
Yes, it will, Madam Chair.
So motion carries.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 112-6695, 168 Humboldt Avenue. This is a reframed roof with the damage by the fire, by a fire, and refamed the exterior wall. Violation is Article 50, Section 29, Side Yard Is Insufficient, and Article 50, Section 29, Rear Yard Is Insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
It should be Carlos Martins.
Hi, how you doing?
Okay, there you go.
My name is Carlos Martins, 168 Humboldt Avenue. So we are, we are trying to, to raise the dome a little bit. There was a dome there before. And so we're not passing the peak of the roof or we're not going, you know, beside the building at all. We're just raising a little bit.
Okay, so is this a one or a two-family?
A two-family.
It's a two-family, you live in the house?
No, I'm not the one. I'm just the GC.
Oh, I see, the GC, okay, so is it owner-occupied?
It is, yep.
Okay, so tell us what, what the difference in height is that you're proposing from the existing to the proposed.
So the height, we, somebody else was speaking, I'm sorry. So the height will be, we're going to have the end of it, we're going to, we lift it up a little bit so we can walk, we have walkover space there. Before was just, we had only like three feet. Now we have seven foot six.
And what's the use of that space?
So the bathroom becomes bigger so we can have a full bathroom. Before was like, you know, he was walking, it was pretty tight in there. So just like, we can have a shower, toilet, and sink there.
Okay, let's just see, okay. You have a shed, and you have a shed right next to the house?
Uh, no, no. We have the garage, yep.
But no shed?
No shed, no.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans, the plans are fine. No questions on the scope.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Jason Gant from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support of this proposal. And a butters meeting was held on June 7th where they answered all questions and concerns of the community members and have received strong community support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of boards. This is Quinn Valsich and we have City Council at Large, Michael Flaherty. Councilor Flaherty would also like to go on record in support of this project since the proponent's a longtime resident looking to restore the previous condition of their home. The proponent has the support of the neighborhood at large as well as the Mayor's Office. We'd like to echo that support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have a few letters of support as well.
So, Mr. Martins, who is, who is the property owner since you are the GC?
Leslie Lewis.
Okay.
We also have a raised hand from Mike Cozoo from Project Wright.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mike, go ahead. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Michael Cozoo, Project Wright, 3208 Blue Avenue. We organized a neighborhood association meeting, the Crawford, Holland, Ruth, Winona, Wombach Association. That includes many abutters. People want to go on record supporting Leslie Lewis, who's a longtime resident of this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I have no additional raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA Design Review. I think the geometries of the dorm are a little odd how everything comes together, so I think maybe a little bit of refinement in the shape would be helpful or how they translate. So BPDA Design Review.
I second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 116-4411, 48 Botwell Street. This is a renovation to an existing two-family house, including addition of two shed dormers in the existing attic. The project will also include added living area to the basement and a new... The project will also include added living area to the basement and a new two-story deck with stairs at the back of the house. The violation is Article sixty-five, section thirty-two. This is an N D O D. Review required. Article sixty-five, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories, and Article sixty-five, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair. This is Glenn Hoffman, I'm the architect on this project, and with GPH Design, we're located at one Adam Street in Milton. I'm also here with the owner of the property, Brian Kelly. Um, and as described, this is um, we are adding living space to the, to the um, basement. It's not gonna be a sleeping area, it'll be a laundry area and a family room. And we're also adding living space to the attic space. We're tearing off the current roof, which is a kind of a double hip roof, and putting on an A-frame and providing a dormer to provide the living space up there. The uh, the height of the building will remain unchanged, the pitch of the roof will remain unchanged. It is a two-family residence.
And is it owner occupied?
It will be, yes. The top will be occupied.
So, tell us about the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
It is, um, it's above seven-six.
Uh, okay, it's seven-six?
Yes, it is called.
Okay, and um, are the utilities in a separate space?
They will be. They'll be in the mechanical area or at the front of the basement. The front third of the basement will remain mechanical.
Okay, and tell us about the two-story deck?
The two-story deck is just off the back, and it's just providing a deck for each of the two units.
Okay.
Providing a ways to the backyard from, from the units.
Okay, and then the shed dormers, what's the use of the, of that proposed space?
That will be a master bedroom with a walk-in closet and a bathroom.
Okay. Um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, the, the plans, plans are good. Uh, you know, I think that the one thing about this street has, you know, a very similar architectural style of the, the front sort of dormer, doghouse-type dormer, and this proposed addition will take away from that, and I think that's something that we should uh, think about in consideration with the uh, design review, at least. I think there potentially is a way to get the scope that they're looking for, which I don't have a problem with. Um, but maybe uh, keep some of the elements of that uh, front as they move through that process. So, no questions on the scope.
Thank you. Um, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Twain with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant at forty-eight Botwell Street completed outreach through meeting with the butters in the local civic group, and there were no concerns. So, at this time, our office would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands. Thank you.
Okay, um, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve uh, with BPDA Design Review. Uh, specifically looking at the street wall and sort of the dormer aspect of the street uh, elevation.
Hi, Mr. Robinson, this is Tom. So, this is actually in a neighborhood design overlay district, which means the BPDA has to review it anyway.
Yes, but we, and so, and so we want to make sure that it is, um, that they know what our concerns are. Okay, so.
A double review, then.
Yes, and I too am in support, so you're all set with that proviso. Good luck.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one-one-five-seven-six-seven-eight, forty-one Rockwell Street. This is to build a new addition. The violation is Article sixty-five. Section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please. Mr. Lawrence is on.
Mr. Alex, yep.
Yes, I am. How you doing?
Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Alex Lawrence. Address is forty-one Rockwell Street.
So, Mr. Lawrence, is this a one or a two-family dwelling?
Um, this is two-family dwelling.
And it's owner occupied?
Owner occupied.
Uh, so tell us what's being proposed?
Um, basically, on the second floor, uh, we plan on, I believe, adding some support beams uh, to create um, uh, some open space for the additional uh, space that I want. Um, from there, uh, on the third floor, we have um, a dormer that I'd like to add on, which will add a secondary stair wall uh, to the third floor, which will make it a lot safer um, to exit the property um, just in case you may be on the third floor.
Okay, and tell us about how many bedrooms are on that, uh, in that second unit? Um, how many bedrooms are in that second unit?
Um, I believe it should be about three bedrooms.
Okay, so, uh, so, Mr. Lawrence, tell us how this has not, does not have the possibility of becoming another unit?
Um, I believe it's the second, the, the stairway from the second floor to the third floor, they do not um, join. Um, so you have to go through the second-floor apartment to get to the third floor.
Okay, and um, will you be doing uh, any other rehab on this structure?
Um, besides the roofing design and the siding and window replacement, probably not.
Okay, so are you gonna be putting new siding and new windows on the building?
Technically, if I have the money, yes.
Okay, okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are good, and, and he's correct. The stairs do not connect, so there's a disconnect there. I think um, no, no issues again with the, the proposed um, work. I, I do think maybe a little BPDA help on the, the design of the dormer would be, would be good, because it's also a couple of different roof planes coming together, so no questions.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dante P. was here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, we would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Um, and a butters meeting was held on June third where no major concerns or issues were brought up by butters. Um, and for that reason, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no additional raised hands.
Okay, so may I have a motion, please? Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve, sorry, with BPDA Design Review.
I'll second that.
Uh, I too am in support, so you're all set with that proviso, uh, Mr. Lawrence. Good luck.
Thank you, Kristen.
On your next case, calling BOA one-one-eight-zero-nine-eight-three-twenty-four Dodge Road. This is adding a one-car garage to the side and more living square footage to the rear of the house. The violation is Article sixty-nine, section thirty-point-five. The sidewall unparalleled to the lot, and Article sixty-nine, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Jean Ernest Mark. And I'm living on this uh, property twenty-four Dodge Road, Hyatt Park, my zero-two-one-two-six.
So, uh, is this a one or a two-family?
It's a one-family.
Okay, so tell us about the garage that you're proposing to build.
Yes, you know, I'm, I'm living in the, in the nice uh, deadened street. And then I tried to build a garage to try to keep the street, you know, free from, for cars when it's snowing and everything. And then at the same time, I had planned to live in the house for the rest of my life. And then I tried to add some more square footage and add to make the house, you know, more comfortable for, for me and my family.
Okay, so tell us about um, the addition, are you proposing an addition to the rear of the house?
Yes, yes.
And tell us how big that addition is?
Uh, it's pretty much a, like a, in, in, in other room. We, we, we should gonna become like a, the master bedroom with a bathroom, with a bathroom on it, and then uh, try to extend a little bit more my kitchen and my dining room.
Okay, so it's a two-story addition?
Yes, it's pretty much.
Okay, um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, the plans are, are fine. They do show the scope, so there, it's, it's a basement, some additional basement space and then on the main floor, so it's, it's not above that, so um, it's a, a lower addition, so it's not changing the overall roof line of the buildings.
And the garage is uh, in fact, can accommodate a, a single vehicle?
It, it does look like it can. It's twelve feet wide is what it's called out on the plans.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. Mr. D'Amico has spoke on this. He said the plan does work and is an existing curve cut.
Oh, excellent, okay. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would go on record in support of this proposal. We did some char, it's in line with the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jordan Freyas here with the Council Ricardo Royals Office. We want to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we also have letters of support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, raise hands, sorry.
No problem. Uh, may I have a motion, please?
Um, I have just one question for the proponent. It, the um, the butter to your, if you're facing your ass to your right, um, it, it might be Gary Roach, I'm not sure. Are, are they, they're aware and they're in support of this project, because the way your house sits on the site you a little bit, and you're moving toward them, is there, everything is, they're aware of it and in support of this?
Yes, it is. It give me a letter of support that I sent.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. So, uh, with that, with that information, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA Design Review.
I'll second that motion uh, as well.
I too am in support, so you're all set. Good luck.
And, Mr. Robinson, we do have that letter from Mr. Roach.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Calling a next case, calling BOA one-one-eight-three-nine-five-five-twenty Clear Avenue. This is a new porch and bedroom addition at the front of the house and extension of habitable space. The violation is Article sixty-seven, section nine, the side yards insufficient, and Article eighty-eight, section four. This unique design review required. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Norberto Leon, and I'm the architect for the project.
So, Mr. Leon, please, is this a one or a two-family, and is it owner occupied?
It's a two-family, and the owner does live in, in one of the units, on the top unit.
Okay, so please tell us what's being proposed?
So, we are demolishing the existing porch, and we are building a new porch with a second-floor extension of habitable space uh, for the owners.
Okay, and so will that be a double entryway, then?
Uh, yes, there's two entrances to the, to the building.
Okay, um, and so your violation is the side yard, uh, which is four-point-three to four-point-five, okay? How are the plans, um, Mr. Robinson?
So, there's, this is the only plan that came through to my desk for a review, so I, you know, I don't, we don't, I don't have any information on what's being expanded internally or uh, any of the exterior elevations to review.
Yeah, we submitted a full set of plans with renderings and elevations. Uh, I'm not sure why this is the only plan. This is just the, just a site plan to show.
That's correct, yeah.
Is there any way that I can upload uh, to, to plans that we submitted?
Well, can you just quickly, maybe, I mean, I appreciate maybe we have a technical problem. Can you just explain a little bit of this, this, what's the addition on the second floor adding, and just give us a little bit of the scope of the work?
Sure, so my, my client uh, lives on the second floor, and what she's trying to do is extend her master bedroom uh, and have a little bit of an office space. Um, so that's, that's, and she wants to also have a, like, a little exterior porch. So, uh, you could see on the site plan that there's uh, two bay windows, and then there's like a, a, a middle deck uh, between the two bay windows, so uh, one of the bays is for, for her uh, master bedroom extension, and the other one is for her, her office.
So, this, the, and, and I'm looking at the, the house on Google Maps, just so I can, so then the third-floor attic will be set back, is, because you're not expanding that, you're only spending second in the porch?
Correct, that's right.
Okay.
I wish I, I wish I had the render on the, on the screen, I could show it to you better.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, this is Tom. Uh, can I speak to Mr. Leon for a second about his plans?
Uh, yes.
Uh, Mr. Leon, uh, do you know what email address you submitted your plans to?
Um, so I submitted them to, um, let me see here. This was sent to, to the inspector a while ago. We uploaded the drawings to the um, to the online permitting process, and then also I sent it to the uh, neighborhood representative. And uh, let me see here, I'm just looking at my email, just make sure. Just give me a second here, please. Uh, so I sent it to Uju Onochi, and uh, her email address is C-H-I-N-O-N.
No, we see, yeah, we see that Uju is on this call as an, as a, as a participant or as an attendee. So, we will hear from, from her. So, um, so, I, I think the question, Mr. Robinson, are you, are you prepared to go ahead with any kind of decision on this, or a, a decision? And then wait, and just a quick review of the plans when they, when they surface?
Um, so I, I think I'm, I'm, I'm probably fine with approving it. We're not changing any of the zoning. There's no, you know, there's no impact on that. It's already a non-conforming, I believe. So, the um, the, I guess, the one thing I wanted to, is there, so the BPDA... Did they, they weigh in on this? They did.
I, I have not been able to find their, um, their recommendations.
So, I, I did get them. Um, so they do recommend approval with a, with a design proviso, which I think is great, and I, obviously, we would look, so I, I guess I wondered if they actually reviewed it, the actual plan, so that gives me a little bit more confidence, but I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, so is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would go on record in support of this proposal. Uh, this is a longtime resident that's seeking to gain some more living space for her home. Um, and it is very much in character with other homes on that street and the, the broader neighborhood. Uh, we don't think this will be intrusive at all for other neighbors. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA Design Review.
I will second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set. Uh, good luck.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one-one-nine-zero-four-three-eight-nine McDonough Court. This is to construct a new second-floor addition for a new bedroom and bathroom. The violation is Article sixty-nine, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive, and Article sixty-nine, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Timothy Burke with a business address of one forty-two Berkeley Street in Boston. And um, the project before you this evening is for a single-family owner-occupied house in Hyde Park. My clients have lived there for almost twenty years, and they have lived for a very long time with no bathing fixture on the bedroom level. They only have a half bath there, so the addition is, a proposed addition is for a master bedroom, which would have a bathroom, and then we'd also add a hall bathroom to bring them up to the twenty-first century standards.
Okay, um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are good, no question on the scope.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would go on record in support of this proposal during the community process. We're unaware of any neighborhood concerns. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve uh, with BPDA Design Review.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support, so you're all set with that. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
On your next case, calling BOA one-one-nine-eight-nine-three-zero-ten Crandall Street. This is a third-floor dormer, third-floor installation and finishes. The violation is Article sixty-seven, section- This is a third floor dormer, third floor insulation and finishes. The violation is Article sixty seven, section twenty eight, design review required. Article sixty seven, section nine, the floor to air ratio is excessive. Article sixty seven, section nine, the building has excessive in stories. Article sixty seven, section nine, the front yards insufficient. Article sixty seven, section nine, the side yards insufficient. And Article sixty seven, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Frank Dill. I'm at twenty-seven Leslie Road in Belmont, Massachusetts, and I'm the architect for the project. I'm also here with the owners.
Um, so is this, is, tell us, is this a one or a two family and is its owner occupied?
It is a one family and it is owner occupied.
So tell us about this third floor, proposed third floor dormer?
Sure. Um, right now there's some finished space on the third floor. There's a stairway serving that space with extremely low headroom. It's two feet below the building code in some spots. Uh, we're proposing a shed dormer that would provide additional living space on the third floor. But also provide building code minimum ceiling heights at the stair, hallway, bathroom and bedroom.
Okay, um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are good. No, no questions on what's being proposed.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
I'm sure I have no raised hands.
Madam Chair, Secretary, we do have support letters.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
I, I'm sorry to interrupt. Mayor's Office second on record support. I believe Uju was listed as a participant, not a panelist, which might be unable to, uh, participate. If, Jessica, if you could switch over to a panelist, I'd be appreciative.
Yes, she should. She was on earlier. Um.
My apologies, Madam Chair.
Yeah, she's on as a panelist. I think I'm trying to unmute her. She might be having some connectivity issues.
Okay, so you're speaking on behalf of the Office of Neighborhood Services and you were in support, right? Okay, so may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with B P D A design review.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support. So you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling B O A one one eight four two six eight eighty Prince Street. This is renovate the basement for a small office. The violation is Article fifty five, section nine, the floor to air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Henry Spitzer, eighty Prince Street, owner occupier.
Is this a one family or two family?
Single family.
So your little baby was distracting me while I was reading all the instructions. How old is she or he?
It's screaming right now, if you can hear her, but she's two months old and we have a, almost two year old as well. So we got our hands.
I see. That's why you need that basement office. Okay, so tell us about the details of that basement office.
Yeah, so basically, um, just kind of creating some space down there. No, you know, no bedrooms, no kitchens, none of the bad stuff. We're basically, if you go down to the next, that's the existing footprint currently on the screen. And if you scroll down, you have the elevation. Um, so actually, I think if you go up, sorry, a little bit more. Oh, there we go. Yep. So we're doing a mechanical room, which is sort of existing. That's where the current water heater and, and mechanicals are, are stationed. Um, we're going to put sort of a playroom on the right side there, which is just going to contain kind of toys. Um, bottom left is sort of a TV space and it's divided by a little barn door. Uh, and then you can see there's an existing bathroom. Actually, it was a half bath. Uh, plumbing is there, we're just moving the toilet over a little bit, um, into the center of the, the room and then, um, sort of a dividing door there for an office, um, for kids to do their homework and for us to get some peace and quiet for our workday.
So tell us about the floor to ceiling height in the basement.
Yeah, so it's about eighty-eight inches. Um, so it's fairly high.
Okay, and, um, tell us about the windows.
Yep, so the windows are, um, your standard kind of, uh, casement type of windows. I forget the name for them. Um, but, uh, we're, we, you know, we'll, uh, keep them the same style, same size and everything.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, the plans are good. No questions on what they're proposing.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tiffany Gallo here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, the applicant received full support from the Jamaica Pond Association. They have not received any testimonies of the position. Or been notified of any objections. Our office would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We do have letters of support as well.
Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support. So you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you so much. Madam Chair, did you hear me? I'm sorry. I didn't know if I was on you. I second that.
Okay, we're all set. Thanks.
Thank you. Calling a next case, calling B O A one one eight four four six five eleven Burtson Avenue. This is an attic eight foot dormer for, on the second floor. The violation is Article fifty six, section eight. The floor to air ratio is excess, excessive. Article fifty six, section eight, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please. Madam Chair, can Mr. Mark, John, can you mute yourself?
If Mr. Mark is done, can he please log off?
He's muted, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
He was. Now he's back on.
I got him. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are you all set, Mr. Fortune, with the violations?
Um, did I read him in Madam Chair? I'm sorry.
I know, I too got distracted, so.
Let me just do this over again. This area guides to eleven Burtson Avenue, West Roxbury. This is adding eight foot dormer for a second floor bath. The violation is Article fifty six, section eight, the floor to air ratio is excessive, and Article fifty six, section eight, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Let's move on to the next case.
Very good.
Actually, he is here. I'm, I'm sorry. Let me just unmute him. Robert, can you, can you hear me? Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, go ahead. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is, um, Robert Ricefelder. Fifty-two Great Field Ave, West Roxbury, Mass.
Um, is so, um, we're talking about Burtson Ave. Is that a one or a two family and is it owner occupied?
It's owner occupied and it's a single family home.
Okay, so tell us what's being proposed?
The, the, um, the current owners are, have an expanding family and they want to add a second floor bathroom. And the dormer is just for the headroom for the bathroom.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are fine, very straightforward, no questions.
Very de minimis. Okay, is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Just want to go on record and support. The applicant completed a community process and went before the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on June twenty-second and received their full support. Thank you.
No raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support. So you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
On the next case, calling B O A one two one 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 six two two twenty-seven Manton Road. This is an addition to a single family residence. The violation is Article fifty six, section eight, the floor to air ratio is excessive, and Article fifty six, section eight, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Edward Carpenter. I live at two twenty-seven Manton Road.
So please tell us what you're proposing. What is this addition?
So what the addition is, um, we have myself, my wife and four daughters. We're looking to put on a family room in the back and a master bed and bath above it, just to add a little more living space for the family.
Okay, um, and so the side yard, uh, is an, oh, it's, you're extending a little bit further into the side yard and your F A R is excessive. So this is a two-family addition. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, unfortunately, it's, it's a similar case where all I have is this site plan. I don't have any other drawings for the case. Um, so I don't, I mean, from the site plan, it seems fairly straightforward, but, uh, I don't know if there's any more information on.
Yeah, I, I, I thought that I definitely, um, showed those. And for the side yard, Madam Chair, the, um, we're not, we're not changing how the side yard is. We're going right off the existing.
No, I understand what we're trying to understand is what it looks like. Uh, because, uh, so in addition to the, in addition to the addition, you're putting in a proposed deck back there, right? And, and, and the, the thing we're mostly interested is, in, is how it's looking and how it fits in with the current, uh, current building that you have.
Okay, and I apologize. I thought that I had emailed those over. Um.
Yeah, Eric, I just sent them over to you. I don't know if you received them, but I just have to do the email with the plans.
Okay, so let's hold on a minute while Mr. Robinson checks his, um, checks the plans.
Oh, man, you're gonna sit here and watch me try to find my email and? Let me see if I.
My apologies, I thought I sent those.
It's okay.
See, this is not a good position to put him in just after his back from vacation.
I know. I have still shaking out the cobwebs. There's no doubt about it. It hasn't come through yet.
Madam Chair, do we know what the dimensions are of the deck? I'm sorry, I missed that part.
So the deck is dimensioned, it's ten by twenty-three. So I don't, uh, that's fine. It's moving back, it looks like. And then the addition is, is twenty-eight by seventeen. Um, it, it, it actually, um, it's not increasing the, the, the side yard necessarily because it's at ten feet in the front of the building. It's six. So it's, it is tucked in behind and, and the B P D A did, uh, review something. I guess maybe they, and they, uh, they are recommending approval with a proviso. So I, I haven't seen the drawings yet. I, I, I feel we can probably move forward based on if we can have testimony from, um, any electants or the neighborhood.
Mr. Carpenter, are you an elected?
I am an elected, Madam Chair.
Okay, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Just want to go on record and support. Uh, Rep. Carpenter went before the, uh, West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on July twenty-seventh, received their full support and had a few neighbors on the call as well, direct and butters who are also in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with B P D A design review.
And I second that motion.
I too am in support. So you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you so much for your time. My apologies again.
No, no troubles.
Calling a next case, calling B O A one one nine zero five eight two forty-five Selwyn Street. This is existing second floor roof replacement and a new second floor and roof. Violation is Article sixty seven, section nine, insufficient side debt setback. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Anthony Ross, um, three forty-three Belgrade Avenue for the applicant Michael Keen.
So, Mr. Ross, is this a one or a two family dwelling?
This is a single family home.
Okay, and tell us about the proposal.
The proposal is, this is a one and a half story Cape. Um, and the proposal is to convert it into a true, a two and a half story, um, home with a full second floor with three bedrooms and two bathrooms, um, essentially to modernize the structure without changing the footprint. So the existing side yard setback is, um, is not changing. Um, and the, uh, living area of the house is only increasing modestly, uh, with the, um, half finished attic currently. Uh, the home has about thirteen hundred square feet, uh, according to the assessing department and, uh, proposed square footage of the home with the full second floor is sixteen hundred and sixty-four square feet. So only approximately a three hundred and fifty square foot increase.
And the only violation is the side yard and it's probably because there's already an existing side yard violation.
That's correct. No change in the footprint of the existing building.
Okay, how, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, the, the, the plans are, uh, plans are good.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, let go on record and support this proposal. Thank you.
I'm sure we have no raised hands.
Okay, ma'am, may I have a motion, please?
Um, I, I will make a motion to approve. I, I actually don't think they even need B P D A design review. I think it fits nicely into the, the street.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
I too am in support. So you're all set. Good luck.
Great, thank you very much.
Calling a next case, calling.
Uh, just real quick, uh, so I did get the plans for two two seven Mantor, is it Mantor? Um, and I, they, they look, uh, the plans look good. I, I have no problem with, everything is shown and I think it's a, 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 a nice addition. So I, I don't have any issue with what we approved previously.
Thank you for putting that on the record.
Thank you.
Following next case, calling B O A one one nine seven eight two two one thirty Greaton Road. This is adding a new floor and rear addition to a single family home. The violation is Article fifty six, section eight, the floor to air ratio is excessive. Article fifty six, section eight, the front yards insufficient. Article fifty six, section eight, the rear yards insufficient, and Article fifty six, section eight, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Madam Chair and Board. This is Beth Mueller, Architect, representing Beth McLean. My address is one eight one Boden Street, Dorchester.
So tell us what's being proposed?
We are, it's currently a one and a half story, single family. We're raising it to two and a half stories, uh, to add more space on the second floor. Uh, and we're doing a small rear addition. That will be an office, a mudroom and a small deck. Uh, the second floor will be three bedrooms, uh, a bath and a master bath with a lofted closet. And then the attic will be just a finished sort of playroom or.
So the, then the second floor will be three bedrooms and the attic is just unfinished space?
Uh, we, we think that they're going to finish it, but it's not going to be any bedrooms or anything, uh, designated as of yet. They just want to have a finished space.
Okay. Let's see, um, front yard is existing, rear yard, side yard is all existing violations. And those, and this is, um, Greaton, is it, um, this, the side of the street is, uh, the sloping end?
Yes.
It's a slope. Okay, is, um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, the plans look, uh, look good.
Is anybody, thank you. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Just want to go on record and support. Uh, the applicant went before the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on, uh, June twenty-second and received their full support. In addition, I got a couple of calls from our neighbors that were also in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We do have a couple of letters of support.
Thank you.
Hands, thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ambassador, did you say there were no raised hands?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so may I have a motion, please?
Uh, I will make a motion to approve as well. I, and I also don't think this needs B P D A design review. I think it's a very nice design.
Okay.
I will second that motion.
I too am in support. So you're all set with that. Good luck.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
You too.
Calling a next case, calling B O A one one eight five eight two three thirty-five Foster Street. This is add living space to the basement for a second. Add into the basement for a second floor only. The violation is Article fifty one, section nine, the floor to air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacass, Lacass Law, seventy-five Arlington Street in Boston. I represent the owner of the property, uh, Lee Moore Yahalom and her husband Barack Yahalom. And, uh, she is with us on, uh, the meeting as well, if you have any questions for her.
And is this a one or a two family?
This is an existing two family, Madam Chair. And when my clients purchased the property in February of twenty twenty, just before COVID, um, intending to renovate the upper floor to units, um, there is shown on sheet X A, um, later in the packet, that there was an existing illegal unit in the basement. And, um, they have removed that. They removed the kitchen. They removed, they removed everything that was in the basement and essentially gutted it. And now portion of the basement is used for, uh, the sprinkler tank room and some other common facilities. And the proposal before you tonight is simply to, uh, create five hundred eighty-six square feet of extra living area for unit number two, which is on the second and attic level of the building. Little confusing, so if we can make reference to one of the floor plans or if Mr. Robinson has any specific questions, I was only.
I mean, this is, this, I think in the time I've sat on the board, we've seen this maybe once or twice, and we've not been big supporters of this.
Madam Chair?
Yeah?
I just got a quick question from Mr. LaCass. Is this gonna be an Airbnb?
No, sir. There are, there are two units in the building. And just to give you some frame of reference for the quality of properties that my clients own, they purchased this property in February of 2020 for $900,000, and they have since put in $630,000 of renovation into units one and two. New systems, new plumbing, new electrical.
So let me just ask you this. This sounds like this, is this an investment property, or is it owner-occupied?
This is an investment property. They own three other buildings in the vicinity and live nearby, and very carefully select their tenants. They have completed the work on the upper two units. One of them has been rented.
Okay, so by error, this ended up at the subcommittee. It should be at the full board. So may I have a motion for deferral to a full board meeting, please?
I'm gonna make a motion for deferral.
I'll second that.
I too am in support. The date, please.
And that's based on it being not owner-occupied, Madam Chair?
Yes, yes. And also, the owners can like think this through a little bit, but so there's a motion for deferral. The date, please, I'm sorry.
We're gonna do October 19th at 12:30.
October 19th at 12:30, we'll see you in the outgoing. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Calling the next case. Sorry. Calling BOA 120-8353, 200 Fanniel Street. This is moving a residential driveway, close one curb, close one curb cut and open a new one on the other side of the property. The violation is Article 10, Section 1, limitation of a parking area. Article 51, Section 56, off-street parking requirement. And Article 51, Section 56, off-street parking and loading. Name and address for the record, please.
Ruthie and Reginald Jean, 200 Fanniel Street.
Hi, we're the Jean family. So we have a, on the back of our property was a driving, was a parking space, and we want to create a recreational space for our girls, for our daughters to play. So the proposal is to put the parking on the side of the house.
Okay, and this is a single-family home?
Yep.
Okay, it's nice to see single-family homes on Fanniel Street and Ward 22. And that shed is an existing shed? Are you proposing to move that shed?
No, that shed doesn't exist. It was, it's, we're hoping to put a shed there.
Okay, because you know, sometimes we have concerns about cars being so far in the front yard. You know, because sometimes that detracts or makes it difficult. It takes away from the quality of the streetscape. So you appear to have room to move the cars back a bit, right?
Exactly, yep.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are fine, except for what you're pointing out. I think we, you know, we understand that the car is shown in the front yard, which we don't usually approve of.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. Mayor's Office wants to offer its full support. The applicant flyer the neighborhood and received positive feedback from one of the director butters, who also participated in the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association. They just worked on some screening and buffering issues together on that, but the butter indicated support, and they went on and received full support from the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association as well. It's a great opportunity to provide some more green space for a growing family to enjoy. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have a few letters of support as well.
Thank you.
Raised hands.
Can you try Annabelle Gomes, please? Because I know she generally has a hard time popping in.
She might, there's also a fire in her neighborhood as well, so she might be dealing with that, but representative.
She's actually on.
I see that she has a raised hand.
Okay, so, go ahead, Annabella, sorry about that.
Yeah, we do have a fire in the neighborhood, but I'm here. Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record and support. He worked out with the neighbors. We do ask that some care be given to how the driveways drain, since they'll be side-by-side, not letting the water. We don't want the waters to go into either of the houses, but other than that, we support this fully.
Okay. Anybody else? No, so may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve. But no, I just, BPDA, I'll just make a motion to approve.
I'm gonna second that motion.
I too am in support. So Mr. and Mrs. Jean, you understand our position, and we generally do not, you know, we understand that you're a small property owner, a single-family home, so we do not want to waste your time or have you spend your time going through design review. So if you can make sure that in fact, when you do your driveway, you move it further back so that that car is more fully into your side yard. It does not go in front of that front line of your house, okay?
Okay, yeah, we'll go beyond what it is now.
Oh, it should go further back some, okay? So there's a motion for approval, and you understand what Annabelle just talked about, about the drainage. So, so motion carries. Was there a second, wait. I too am in support, so you're all set. Motion carries. Good luck. Okay, the meeting is now adjourned. Welcome back, Mr. Robinson. I had forgotten to do that at the beginning, and Mr. Fortune, have a good trip out west.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, nice to be back. Take care, everybody.
See you next week.
Yep.
Great.
Not so much like a usable deck that you're gonna be grilling on, but just more of an indoor/outdoor element. We like that being a cannibal, you know, you don't have a covering above you. It feels like you're kind of standing outside of the building, just for light use and kind of a reuse perspective. But yeah, it's definitely, totally something to consider.
I think they're scary.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's been said, but it's, they're just not historic. And actually, I'm not really in favor of any kind of overhang over sidewalks, to be honest. And this building, you know, there's no setback really, which, you know, the existing building doesn't have one either, so it's, that's not really an issue, but, and, but you know, that, that just kind of highlights for me even more that we would want to stick within that confines of the law and not make it appear that it's approaching over the sidewalk in the street. It's not a historic look. There's a lot of, there's been historically more awnings and things like that, but not, you know, construction like that of a hangover.
And you know, we're definitely considering, again, referring back to the strategic plan and upgrading as many historical elements, the masonry beside, the coloration. But we really did want to make sure that we were also leaning towards, you know, modernization and, you know, kind of dynamic aesthetic to the building as well, and hoping to find a strike there. So certainly noted to your comment, but we weren't, you know, we're thinking that this was a nice kind of bridge between old and new in a way as well. I think it's perfect for this corridor, maybe not so much in the actual historic district, but for something like this, we thought that was a nice look to it.
Any other comments? I hope this was helpful, and you know, like as John said, it probably makes sense to have another session for a full review.
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, good. I really appreciate your time, everyone. Thank you for the feedback and look forward to meeting again.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thanks. Take care.
Bye. Hello?
Hey, it didn't go well.
Well, I'm trying to figure out what the hell. So I was in touch with.
Like, negative from the start, even didn't let you.
That's right, that's right. It was a total back job, so.